Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being with us this evening. I will call this meeting to order. Uh, thank you all for being with us. Uh, if you haven't, please sign in in the back. There's a signing sheet. We'd love to know who is with us. Councilmember Snaby, can you confirm we have a floor?
Yes, sir.
For application, uh, Mr. Ross. Sir, are you with us?
There you are.
Stand forth, sir, and please provide identification for this.
Alright, it's good to be with all of y'all tonight. I'm, um, the pastor of Momentum Church. It was 20 years ago this week that my family moved to Woodstock, Georgia, to plant that church. And as we went there, we met with the mayor and everyone, and we always told them, "We want to be a church in the city. We want to be a church to the city." And so anything we would put our hands to, we do. And a long story short, we've had so many of our young families moving to Jasper, and the Lord gave us an opportunity to have a building up here. And so in August, we're launching a campus up here with a campus pastor. And I just extend the same thing. Anything we can do for the city, we don't want to be a church in it. We want to be a church to it. And so anything you do, lift your hands, you let me know, alright?
Thank you.
And then the thing is, your leadership, what you do, it's much like pastoring. You know, you want to do well. You want to do good. You want to reach people. You want to make a difference in your community. But I don't know about you, everything you do that's well, for some reason, people bite. For some reason, you can't do good enough. You know, you try hard to help, and there's always going to be a naysayer. There's always going to be somebody, right? And as a pastor, my heart goes out to you city leaders, because I know you want to do well. I know you want to do right. And I think of life like a funnel, and all the negative things that come into it. As leaders, you face so many things. And with those things coming, I love the passage that says, "All things work together for the good of those who are called according to his purpose." And you guys have been called. Called by the votes, the voters of this community. Called by, I believe, the sovereign one himself. And that all things will work together for good. And so my prayers for you, as you lead tonight, as you lead our community, that you'll just realize, yeah, there's some people that got fangs. There's some ones that won't like your decisions. It's alright. It's okay. You just keep leading well, alright? Anything we can do to help as you lead, we're here for you. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come to you. We ask for your hand to be upon this meeting, and for the friends and people that have gathered here today to make decisions based for this community. Lord God, just lead them well, I pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ross, would you ladies give a pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, you have an agenda before you that's pretty restricted. Uh, do you have one amendment I'd like to ask for? I passed out, uh, a letter addressed to the county council. Um, I'd like to add that, um, it's the item number 12 under new business. I'd like to add sidewalk in lieu of letter. Mary Burgess will bring this to us later. This was something that hit staff this morning, and we want to make sure to be cooperative with this business and assist them in getting going. So if that amendment can stand, I'll yield the floor for a motion.
Take a motion. We accept the agenda with the amendment adding, uh, item number 12 to new business.
Second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
I understand. Again, thank you all for being with us. Uh, there are some proclamations that are really important and near and dear to our hearts this evening. Do I have anyone from Keep Pickens Beautiful in the crowd with us this evening? Alright, the first proclamation we have is the Greatest American Cleanup 2025 Proclamation. To designate April 2025 as the Greatest American Cleanup Month, a cooperative effort of Keep America Beautiful, the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, and Keep Pickens Beautiful in partnership with Pickens County and the City of Jasper effective the 7th day of 2025. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim April as the official Cleanup and Beautification Month in Jasper, Nelson, Marble Hill, Talking Rock, and Pickens County. Our projects will be identified as Keep Pickens Beautiful's The Greatest American Cleanup. We invite all citizens to join in actions which will further enhance the beauty of Jasper, Nelson, Marble Hill, Talking Rock, Tate, Hinton, and Pickens County. And we encourage all citizens to work together to sustain these efforts throughout the year dated today. Earlier, this was signed with the chairman of the county commission, the Pickens County Recycling Center, Barry Kleinberger, the president of KPB, and myself as mayor. The next proclamation is for Child Abuse Awareness Month. Do I have anyone here from that group? Miss Dana? Oh, I see you on the back. Fantastic. Alright, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the proclamations, and we're going to come down at the very end and get some pictures, if that's alright. So a proclamation for Child Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas child abuse is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas thousands of Georgia's children are reported abused and neglected each year. And whereas the effects of child abuse are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs, like Parents as Teachers, succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas all citizens should become more aware of the negative effects of child abuse and its prevention within the community, and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Awareness Month in 2025, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their partnership and participation in our effort to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Dated and signed by the Pickens County Commission Chair and Kirk Graffield, Mayor for the City of Jasper. The next proclamation we have is a special proclamation. We do have some folks here with us from our 911 center, our dispatch center. Proclamation honoring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 13th through 19th of 2025. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of public safety personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact 911 dispatch centers. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and are the unseen heroes who work tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure help is dispatched efficiently and effectively. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators provide vital assistance during emergencies, offering lifesaving guidance, reassurance, and support to those in distress. And whereas, the dedicated professionals who serve as public safety telecommunicators are deserving of recognition of their unwavering commitment, dedication, and professionalism in serving their communities. And whereas, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is observed annually during the second full week of April to honor these essential workers and recognize their contributions to public safety. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Jasper and the Pickens County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April 13th through 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Pickens County, and encourage all citizens to join in expressing their gratitude and appreciation for the dedication and service of our public safety telecommunicators. Signed today and executed by the Chair of the Commissioners and myself as mayor. The next proclamation, and the last proclamation today, is the Soil Erosion Control Day, 2025. Whereas the soil upon which we live and thrive is a precious and irreplaceable natural resource. And whereas soil erosion poses a significant threat to our agricultural productivity, water quality, and overall environmental health. Whereas the citizens of Jasper, Georgia, and the surrounding areas have a vested interest in the preservation and protection of our soil resources. And whereas the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission, Georgia Soil and Water Conservation District, and other state and federal agencies, organizations, are working diligently to promote soil erosion control practices. And whereas it is imperative that we take proactive measures to address this critical issue and ensure the long-term sustainability of our natural landscape. Now therefore, I, Kirk Graffield, Mayor of Jasper, Georgia, do hereby proclaim April 8th as Soil Erosion Control Day in Jasper, Georgia. I further urge all citizens to learn about the causes and consequences of soil erosion, adopt and implement soil erosion control practices on their property, utilize native and drought-resistant plant species to promote soil and water conservation, and advocate for policies that protect our soil resources. Dated and signed today. And, do I also have anyone here from Speed Burger? Alright, there you are, Missy. Alright, we're going to come down, and I'm going to go in the same order that I read these in. Counsel, if you'll join me at the front, we'll grab some pictures of everyone. And then this evening, we'll get to you last, and I have a couple of words. I'm like, you be the holder. Anyone from KPB, last?
Nope.
Alright, come on up, Miss Dana and crew. Where do you all at? Come on up.
Come on down.
So one of our reasons for bringing all our proclamations, um, we've not always done this, but our way of recognizing the important proclamations, the important groups, and specifically, the prevention of child abuse. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Alright. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I didn't speak earlier when we signed this at the county building, and I reserved my comments until tonight. There's not a single person in this room or in our community that you have not positively impacted their life. Every single call that comes to you, whether we recognize it as an emergency or not, the person calling is in crisis, and you are there to help them. And I believe each and every one of us owe you a huge thanks for what you do day in and day out. So thank you, and please join us for a picture. The unseen heroes. Yeah, come on up, it don't matter. We're just happy you're with us. Thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all.
Give me a hug.
Thank you.
Alright, it's your turn now. Yes, Mayor.
Now we're grassing.
Thank you, Mayor. And this evening, we have the opportunity to recognize a local establishment, I would call it a local stake. And for decades now, has been in operation in our city, serving our community. And so in recognition of Speed Burger's 60th Anniversary Celebration, the City of Jasper celebrates the Pritchard and the Heath families for their lifelong commitment to serving our community. Please come forward and accept this as a thank you.
That's sweet. Thank you.
You've been at it just a minute.
Just a minute.
Here, this is yours. Ms. Anne, can I see you?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Counsel. Alright, Ms. Burgess, I have a comp plan presentation, man. No, no, miss.
Yeah, well. Alright. Sure, I'm home, we're supposed to be. This is okay. Actually, I gotta take this over a little bit. This is for a little bit of peace for us, or for some, because this is a lot of information. So, good evening, Counsel, Mr. Mayor, members of the public. This is a very exciting evening for us today. We are kicking off our Comprehensive Plan Process 2045. So this is extremely important, um, and I'm very excited about this. And, uh, we're going to tell you a little bit about it, and then next steps. And, uh, where we're going to see ourselves in the next 20 years, so. So I thought I'd do just a little bit of, um, facts and throw you some information about the Comprehensive Plan. A lot of people give it the lip service, but do not come back and tell you what it actually does. So, a comprehensive plan is the long-range policy. So if you think of our big picture, where do we see Jasper in the next 20 years? This is what this is going to create. It's, it takes, it's different from our zoning ordinance, which is a regulatory body, but it creates the opportunity for both city officials and residents to explore the city's opportunities, but also their challenges. Um, it is required by the state, uh, and is, uh, updated on a regular basis, and is one of the things that the state looks at when, um, granting certain, uh, funding and, uh, other opportunities that they offer. So, um, it helps communities address critical issues and opportunities, uh, gives residents an opportunity to participate in guiding their community vision for both the long term and the short term. So it is updated every five years, but because this is going to be the first ever City of Jasper, we start with a 20-year outlook, and then we update that every five years. And then again, we'll do, when we hit 202045, maybe we will do another 20 years out. Hopefully, I'll be retired, but the way things are going, I'll see you in 45. So, one final thing that the comp plan does is it also legitimizes our local development regulations. So we, we have that, it's a very important relationship between the two. So, why are we doing this now? So we're going to move away from a broad county-wide plan, uh, that, um, plan to creating a specific attainable vision for the future of Jasper. So the county, uh, in order to stay compliant with state regulations, updated their comprehensive plan, which includes the cities located in the counties as well. So that was, uh, updated last year, or I'm sorry, in 23, the end of '23. So we are working under that comprehensive plan. So we are hoping to, um, utilize a lot of the existing information in that. So it is, it's a great, great, um, uh, roadmap on where we can go. So what we're doing here is we are making this more Jasper-based, less county-based. So we're in the existing comprehensive plan. They call our character areas northwest, southeast, uh, Jasper. But we know that we're, we have more of an identity than that. We know certain areas that, you know, maybe it's the Cove Road characteristic or neighborhood area. Maybe it's over Philadelphia and Arger Hills area, or the Doris Whittington area. So being able to make it yet less of a broad stroke and really get down into those details that make our, our neighborhoods unique. The neighborhoods that you live in, and the neighborhoods that we have our economic development in as well. So, another opportunity that has arisen, and I know, um, it may not seem like an opportunity while we're in a temporary suspension of water and sewer, but it also gives us that time to really direct where we see the city going with those two vital, uh, infrastructures. Uh, and so in the meantime, while that suspension is going on, we can work in order to promote a sustainable future with our, um, existing infrastructure, but also in creating a, a long-term plan for when development may begin again. So, the, uh, let's see, I'm sorry. Impact Fee Eligibility and Capital Improvements Planning. So the impact, development impact fees, um, and capital improvements, together analyze the needs for each area, and based on the assessment of our current situation and how the area will be impacted, a fee could be assessed or would be assessed in a percentage, uh, to assist the city in completing projects that have been outlined for that specific area or adjacent areas. So by creating a impact fee in a capital improvement portion, the impact fees will take that, um, the, the new benefit of having a new development, and that person or that developer will have to pay X amount per unit or per square footage in order to support the City of Jasper's infrastructure. So it can be based on all aspects. It can be on police and fire. A percentage of that impact fee can go towards police and fires. It can go towards preserving open space. It can go towards creating open space. And of course, as always, our stormwater and our water and sewer utilities. So these funds would go directly to what is allocated in that development impact fee committing guidelines. So, uh, and also, that capital improvement is very, very important because it lets both the city and the residents know what is on the forefront. So capital improvements mean, okay, fire station 14. We know that we're going to be doing that. We know that that is coming up. But if we have that in our plan five years ago, we would have already started putting aside that money, or that match for that grant, or something else that it may need in order to get, get it off the ground. So by having these things and allocating capital improvements, and also having the impact fees and tied together, you will see an outline every year. It's updated, this portion is updated. And so you will see an update of how they're planning on spending the money every year. So it gives us a great, great way of predictability. Now, obviously, you know, we have emergencies, things break. So, you know, those, those do come up, but for the most part, it gives us that transparency of where it is. It means here it all the time, where is the money going? Well, now you'll be able to see. And I'll, I'll tell you, some of the price tags on some of these items are very daunting. So if we can take, uh, you know, some of that cost off of, say, a, a loan, we get to do infrastructure improvements, or if we can add to, uh, I'll use the fire station, yeah, if we can help beautify that area where they're putting it. Or if we can help, you know, purchase additional land to do training, or something like that in the future. Same for the police station, if they're looking for something new to build that they need to accommodate their ever-growing needs. So these two things are incredibly important and are the basis, one of the basis for us to do this now. So, purpose. So, uh, we did talk a lot about the, the shared vision. So, uh, we really, really depend, depend upon public input. There are so many milestones that we have to hit in this program that the Department of Community Affairs has created that all require public input, from surveys, to, uh, town halls, to charrettes, to input, to, uh, every, every aspect we want the public and the stakeholders and the steering committee to be intimately involved in. Um, and again, you know, going back to that strategic planning and those impact fees and capital improvement, they're, they all go hand in hand. And but, we have to have that shared vision of what is needed. So where we have the staff saying, okay, this, um, lift station has, has, has met its, its, uh, lifelong longevity. And we may need to explain why we need to replace this and what exactly it does. But it also helps when we have the residents saying, "Oh, that's what a lift station is used for?" Or, "What about that other lift station? I thought there was one over there." Could we combine them? And it gets that shared vision, those shared goals, which also creates that ownership that we, we so want people to buy into our comprehensive plan. Also, one of the other things is that qualified local government status. So in order for the city to apply for certain grants, such as the Plan First Community or Community Development Block Grants, we have to have an active comprehensive plan. And so by, uh, being able to tie, for example, one of our work program items that was in the, uh, most recent update was that downtown bathroom. That downtown bathroom, we have now checked that box on our work program. We have completed that. And that could possibly get us a designation as a Plan First Community because we went through the motions, we got it done, we had public input, good or bad, and it got, and it was able to, um, be taken off our work program. So being able to outline these things in, in our work program, which is part of the comprehensive plan, but also being able to have the ownership. So, you know, we, we may not have the, the input we, we need for some projects, but being able to have a comprehensive plan that everybody is bought into, and when they see an item that they wanted, such as, say, the Perro Park, and looking and seeing what that's going to become, and when that is finished, that is another item we will be able to check off our list, and will open us up to more grant funding opportunities. Or, you know, like I stated before, that Plan First, we'll take 1% off of a GIF loan, which, as we all know, with all the millions of dollars we get in GIF loans, 1% interest is huge to the city. So, um, just touch on this, um, Ellie's going to go through a lot of the logistics, but I just want to go over some of the, the quick, quick things that will be in the plan. So, community goals, um, and, uh, needs and opportunities. So we have to do a SWOT analysis on, on ourselves. And for those of you who don't know what a SWOT is, we go through our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So we go through these items, and we try and find the good, the bad, and how to get to a, a, an outcome that we are good with and an outcome that is favorable for us. So we're going to go through that exercise. Broadband services, so this, uh, recently, this was put in, well, not recently, but about 10 years ago, they put this in as a qualified, uh, section that has to be included in every, uh, comprehensive plan. But broadband services, we take, well, actually, here, we don't really take it for granted because there are still spotty areas. I know Mary can't get a cell signal at her house half the time and has to come down to, uh, this area to get a Wi-Fi signal to send stuff. So being able to provide broadband services throughout the city itself and making sure that our members, um, no matter what they, their basis of economic need is, uh, everybody has these opportunities, especially for schoolchildren and the dependence on the internet that we have nowadays. So, uh, that community work program, again, that's what I was talking about. When we set goals, and then we, we set how we're going to achieve those goals, and then by meeting those goals, it, it adds, it adds that ownership. So, you know, we, we'll be able to see this at the end. We'll be able to see what we have done in this comprehensive plan. And of course, we'll go through economic development, uh, land use, transportation, and housing. So, um, I know I just skimmed over those last, but everybody pretty much knows, um, about transportation and housing. But like I said before, you know, the comprehensive plan that Northwest Regional Commission did complete, did give us a great jumping off point. Uh, and although our, our schedule is a bit accelerated, we also have, you know, a lot of work that's already been done for us. But this also does allow us to, to, um, go back to Northwest Regional Commission and ask them for some help. So I've already been in contact with them. Ellie and I have been discussing matters with them. They've been such a wonderful, um, asset to the, the comp plan, uh, planning process. So again, going back on this, the big picture, you know, just, uh, making sure that we, we take, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to say that the comprehensive plan is not, um, is not based in, you know, on things that we share with the county. We just want it to be more Jasper-focused. And, you know, um, whereas the county does rely on Northwest Regional Commission, we are lucky enough that we now have, um, qualified staff that has worked on comprehensive plans, uh, and, you know, with a combined, and it sounds weird, but it's 30 years of experience with Ellie and I. It may not be 50 yet, but I'm getting there. Um, we, uh, we, we have a great basis, uh, to be able to do this in-house. And, uh, as you may or may not know, if you hire a private consultant firm, they usually starts off for a small community, it's about $150,000 to complete this, if our community this size. And then finally, before I hand it over to, um, Ellie, I did want to talk about creating a plan identity. So, as you can see, all these plans, they, they, they gave themselves some sort of design. So Create Loveland, or, um, Envision Franklin. And just being able to create an, an identity, they find that you get more ownership when we create that identity. So, you know, keep in mind, start thinking about some things. But, you know, this, this ownership and this pride behind these, uh, these plans that you can see, and these were all, most of them were done by private consultants, but there is nothing to say that we cannot do, do something like, you know, um, you know, Living Jasper, or, you know, Visiting Jasper, or something. So keep it, start thinking of a couple of little slogans we can throw up there. So now I'm going to switch over to Ellie, and she's going to fill you in on all the logistics.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, good evening, council members of the public. My name is Ellie Brundage. I'm the city planner for the city of Jasper. So we can't talk about the comprehensive planning process without talking about the stakeholders that are going to help us to realize this vision. And so the planning team is going to include Jasper residents, you know, community stakeholders, which is business owners, the city council, so elected and appointed officials, and city staff. And all of these groups will play a vital role in this process. So each group is going to bring their own sort of diverse perspective and unique insights that will help to ensure that the plan meets the needs of the community as a whole. And bringing together each group is also going to hopefully lead to enhanced buy-in of the plan and fosters a sense of ownership and commitment to implementing the plan in the future. So Mary briefly touched on the required elements from the comprehensive plan. But beyond those, the state also identifies 10 quality community objectives that address a broad range of issues that concern local governments. So these objectives are essentially the next steps in diving into those required elements and creating specific, attainable goals for our plan's implementation. So for example, you know, where you see the sense of place objective, you could look for developing a small area plan or an adaptive reuse program. And where you see transportation, you could look at developing a sidewalk priority plan or a community trail plan. So these are just some examples of some of the items that we'll sort of dive into as we work to draft the plan. So one of the first steps in this process will be to establish a steering committee. And staff envisions this committee to be comprised of approximately eight members. And I've included some ideas for prospective committee members here for your consideration. And the purpose of this committee is really to facilitate stakeholder engagement by involving various community members, organizations, and city leaders. And the steering committee is going to provide guidance and recommendations based on their collective expertise and the needs that they identify for our community. This committee will also be responsible for helping staff to review and evaluate progress drafts of the plan to ensure that it meets the state-established standards as well as our specific community values. So this is an overview of the public engagement schedule for the plan. As you may recall, we briefly delegated this for you at the council retreat. And this schedule provides multiple opportunities for direct in-person feedback at community open house meetings as well as a pop-up event at our downtown line. Our outreach strategy will also include a community survey that will be open for two months to help capture some of those individuals who may not be able to attend some of the in-person meetings. We intend to advertise all of these meetings on our social media pages and city website as well as advertisements in the Pickens Progress and probably flyers and cards left at, well, visited businesses across town. And I would like to note for the record that this schedule is subject to change, but this really fleshed out sort of the minimum number of touch points that we want to have the community as we work through this process. So in addition to the public engagement schedule, we scheduled a series of meetings for the steering committee to help guide us through the planning process. Each of these meetings will have a well-defined agenda and specific topics for discussion based on where we're at in the draft planning process. As you can see, we start out with that high-level sort of SWOT analysis and visioning exercises that Mary described. And then from there, as we continue to draft the plan, we'll get a little bit more specific until the committee is actually ready to review the draft plan in its entirety. So similarly to the public engagement schedule, this is not entirely locked in, but this is sort of the minimum amount of steering committee meetings that we want to have as we move forward through this process. So I know we've given you a lot of information tonight, but there's three big things that we kind of want to leave you with. So public engagement matters to us. And while it's required, it's really strongly desired by us. You know, we really want the residents and the stakeholders of Jasper to create the blueprint for this vision. And then staff will be here to help with implementation and how we get from where we are to where we want to be. With respect to the state requirements, DCA is outlining the items that they feel are most important to the long-term success of Georgia's communities. And we intend to use these elements and guidelines as a foundation to our plan that we will ultimately build out to be specific to Jasper. By developing a complete plan that addresses all the state's requirements, we will continue to maintain our qualified local government status and eligibility for state funding and grants. And this plan represents sort of a commitment to the state that we take longer planning seriously and it will be a good steward of funds and resources that are given to us. So now that we've sort of completed our initial kickoff, we're looking ahead to the next steps. The first of which will be to start developing the steering committee. So if you have any ideas for community members or business owners that you feel would be good to have on that committee, we're certainly open to those recommendations. And then after that, we'll start to begin the formal sort of identity process where we go through and develop a name and establish an identity for our comprehensive plan. So with that, I can conclude our presentation.
Thank you. It's exciting.
Yes, we're very excited.
Thank you, Madam Burges. Did you have anything to add to that or is that it?
No, no, no. Ellie wrapped it up quite perfectly. So we are very excited about this and this is our time to geek out on something that we have chose for our career. So we seem a little bit more enthusiastic about, yay, plans up. You know, this is our bread and butter. So again, we are very excited and we look forward working with everybody and hearing from everybody. So that will be hearing from us soon, state.
Awesome. Thank you all very much. Now, for next on the agenda, I do have a public comment section. We do have someone signed up for public comments this evening. And so as always, once one's signed up, I'll read the guidelines for public comment. Mayor will announce public comment section of the agenda. This is not a unlimited public forum. The individual making the comment must state their name and address, be physically present with us. Comments are limited to city matters. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. No personal attacks or unwarranted accusations. Mayor Presiding Officer has a right to end the comment or comments due to violation of rules or length of the agenda. Individual commenting can only exercise their public comment section of the meeting once, once a meeting. No individual can allocate or transfer their time for comment to another person. No inappropriate language, signs, or images. And public comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Mr. Robert Keller, sir, I have you on our agenda. Come on up. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You are the solo person.
Thank you. Your Honor, City Council, I appreciate you allowing me to get up here. I think it was about 2018 that Jim, County Councilman, we met about doing something for the city. And we talked about how we wanted to look at the potential Perro, or what's become now Perro Park. And at that time, my organization gave some money to have a plan done with Park, Addison, Lee. And we developed the framework of what hopefully would have been the approach to developing that park. We started out pretty well. We had people, we had input from many people. There were a lot of elected on that board. There were people from the community on that board. We had several meetings at my office and at other places. The last meeting that we had was at the LC Taco back in 2022 when that decision was made in regards to removing the historic structure for the old Perro Clinic. And after that time, the committee went away. We never really understood what happened. We were radio silent that there was no more activities. And up until the DDA meeting of last week, did I ever hear anything about how that went. And I thought we were doing a pretty good job and it seemed like we had. At that meeting, information was disseminated that there had been another committee formed that was only made up of the elected officials and made up of employees of the city. And that that was a requirement for grant. And that seemed odd to me because I've written numerous grants and I've written federal, state, local, and private grants. And it seemed odd to me. So I did some checking and it looks like that the information that was disseminated about that committee is incorrect. Because I think that what we should have done is we should have continued with the community involvement. And at this time, I would ask that the, Your Honor, and the City Council reexamine the formation of that committee and reanimate the committee that was done with citizen input. But any further consideration.
God bless them for a minute. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, no one else signed up. If you'll pass that back to her for later. Next on your agenda, we have the public hearings. At this time, I will open the public hearing. I have Jones Oil Distributor Annexation. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Fantastic. If you'd like to step up and say anything, sir? Happy Monday.
Been a long day.
Yes, sir.
Danny Dangler, address is 5103 Stanton Place Lane, backward Georgia. Working for Clipper Petroleum, which they're in wanting, they already have a contract to buy the property from Jones Oil, which I am representing Jones Oil too on this part of annexation. So they've had a lease agreement for, I don't know, maybe 10 years for truck parking on this parcel that we're annexing in. We're going to build a new C-store on the original Dunn site right there that's already in the city. But because it was an indefinite easement that could have went on for, I don't know how many years that we've got to channel it on it. But I convinced Clipper to go ahead and buy it so that they could do, you know, be able to control exactly what they do and it wouldn't be, you know, getting any arguments with anybody. But that's the purpose of the annexation. And so we combined them into one flat. And then we hoped to make a beautiful building there for the city. Being the first thing that you come to us when you get into Jasper. But we kind of designed it like an old-timey, early 1900s building. So it gives you, we're doing one right now in Flowery Branch, Georgia. But we hope that it'll be more of a country look and do well there for as a city's concern.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the first two items are related requests for annexation and rezoning of 100 acres, like we have. 21 and 1 will ask on Highway 108. Mayor, if it's acceptable to the council, I would like to present these items together. However, I do want to remind everyone that they will be voted on separately when that time comes.
Oh, I'll go ahead. If you'll just keep in mind, Mr. Danny, did you have anything that you wanted to speak on about the Jones Oil Distributor rezoning request? If we're going to speak on both items, did you want to speak on the rezoning request at the same time? Did you have anything to add?
Is it necessary to say anything else?
No, sir, not unless you want to. Just wanted to give you the option.
Excellent.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Ellen, go right ahead.
All right. So to the right, a quick overview of the site context. The subject property is located south and east on the intersection of Highway 515 and Alaska Highway 108. And you may recall, and as Mr. Dangler alluded, the parcel to the north is the home of the former Dunn's restaurant, gas station, and truck stop that was demolished in early 2024. And Clipper is now proposing to develop the property to the north and the subject property with a new gas station, convenience store, and truck stop. So the subject property is currently located in Pickens County Highway Business District. And the applicant is processing the concurrent rezoning request to rezonate property upon annexation from that district into the city of Jasper equivalent C2 zoning district. I also want to note that this property was already served by city water and sewer within Highway 108 that previously served the former Dunn's. So as far as the site context goes, as you can see, the site is currently vacant from the demolition of the Dunn's. And the property is surrounded on all sides by undeveloped commercially zoned property. So the applicant is requesting to annex the property into the city of Jasper and upon annexation, the property is required to be zoned, hence the concurrent rezoning request. If the annexation is approved, the applicant will be required to legally combine the annexation area with their property to the north so that they can have a cohesive development. This is an image of the site plan for the overall development. As you can see, the annexation area includes the south approximately a third of the overall site. And it will include improved with a portion of the truck open canopy and 14 truck parking spaces. So when we violate a rezoning and annexation request, we look to the Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan, which designates the site as part of the Jasper arterial commercial corridor. This land use designation promotes the free and efficient movement of goods and traffic along 515. And the proposed truck stop use is consistent with not only the comprehensive plan but also our zoning ordinance conditions for a annexation and rezoning and that it will not have any meaningful burden on public resources or infrastructure. The overall site, as I mentioned, is already served by city water and sewer. And the applicant is working with GDOT on improvements to the intersection of Highway 515 and Highway 108 to mitigate any potential impacts from the proposed development. So with that, staff and the planning commission recommend approval, subject to conditions. The conditions for the annexation and the rezoning are the same. The first is that the annexation and or rezoning area shall be legally combined with the adjoining parcel prior to site plan approval and transmittal of the annexation support to the state. And the second condition is that this annexation and or rezoning, if approved, does not represent a commitment regarding future water or sewer availability. However, as I mentioned, we do not anticipate any issues with serving this site as a similar use was previously served here. So that completes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Move on to the next item. Chick-fil-A's request. Is the applicant present?
Yes, he is. So we'll pull up Mr. Holiday's presentation.
Well, on the last item, we had the last two items. Was there anyone on the boat that want to comment on those items? Before we get started on the next item? Thank you. All right, no one was coming to us. All right, on to the next item. Thank you for catching that. Yes, sir.
Hi, David. I'm Ben Holiday. I'm with Clayton Signs. We're Chick-fil-A's national sign vendor. And I personally live just right up the road in Marysville. So I'm a mountain guy too. So not my bird, but just I chose to be there. So anyway, the Chick-fil-A, as you probably already wear, is a painting store that's going to be a new public shopping center. On this first page here, you'll see that the, you can see where the Chick-fil-A lot is and you can see the, kind of going at an angle like that, is the main Highway 515. And then Camp Road is going across this way. Chick-fil-A has more frontage on Camp Road than it does on 515 because it's kind of tucked in a little bit further back than the Longhorns is. And that's the position they have there. You go to slide number two. This property, as you've probably seen from the road there, is quite a bit raised above the highway level. The road there is about 1451 feet of elevation. And the lot for the level of the property there is 1471, making a 20-foot difference according to the total graphical plan that I perceived. Looking over to the view, you will see that Chick-fil-A is proposing one wall sign on each side of their building. All those are B, C, D, and E. And down in a very far corner, kind of, it's hard to see, but it's the monument sign that's down in the landscape area there. The total of these signs, of these four signs, is 191.17 square feet, which is keeping them under the 200 square feet. As you probably recall from when Longhorn was here, you said, okay, the stipulation was it had to be under 200 square feet. We heard that and we reduced our signs to get under it too. Looking over to the next page, you'll see the, how the wall signs actually look on the wall. This is a prototypical size for Chick-fil-A. If you told Chick-fil-A you could have whatever size sign you want, this is the biggest of the big. And the only difference is the one that's on the north elevation, which is the revert, the rear side of the building facing the public's building, is that's a little bit smaller, so for the sign, that's the one where it is. And if you look at the next sign, you see kind of how those signs look from a perspective, those, it looks very tastefully done. It's not inappropriate or gaudy or oversized either that's. And then just kind of recap, these are the signs that are on the walls. There's the monument signs there too, which is not really, we're not asking for variance enough for just what's about it. This next page here is something I stole, some information from a McDonald's variance. I've been doing this kind of thing for many years. And I was doing one and someone getting a document from McDonald's variance and they had this information here and I laughed and I've been using it for years. Basically, Chick-fil-A is a type of business, in fast food business, that they are, 70% of their customers come from impulse-driven things. they are seventy percent of their customers come from impulse-driven things, like when they're out. They've had to see the Chick-fil-A, they see the signs, that's why they go there. Frequent visitors are defined as thirty-three percent of the people. I'm trying to put this quick there, I don't want to take too long. Moderately frequent visitors are fifty percent of their visits come from these signs. But then the most important thing, which is very important in a corridor like coming at five fifteen going north to the mountains, and I know because I've traveled that way quite a bit myself, is that, you know, there's a big gap between Canton all the way to Eldridge, but there's no other Chick-fil-A. And you just got to know, or you're invisible, easy. Hundred percent of the time, those people need to have the signs to know. All right. And going back to the, kind of to the topo thing, and from the different positions down the road, you'll see some views from the road, which, you know, if you look right here from number one, you're looking from the point of south. You see the QT, I think it is, sitting there, and it's kind of, you're kind of, Chick-fil-A's kind of tucked in behind it. You got different positions in the roads, and you see the big box truck. That box truck's to your left, you're going to, it's going to be hard to see. You got to really have an opportunity to get these signs visible. The next slide is, this is kind of a show where each of the four signs and building the areas it covers. Not only is Chick-fil-A, you know, it's very important to be, it would be visible to five fifteen, but also Camp Road and also the parking lot that's around it. Be very easy for someone to slip in over here, not being noticed with Chick-fil-A. Going to go in publics, because that's where they put the groceries, and so we need to go there. And that makes it visible for all the points of view that they have possible here. Would point out that the monument sign here, only eight foot tall, is very easily blocked as well. And it also sits up at an angle where you're looking up on the road, it kind of tucks in and sits back. And the last thing I would say is, moving on to the slide board, was that one of the most important things, and I tell this story pretty much every time I do a variance, is that signs are reported to safety for people when they go to find a place and they're going to try to make their moves and turn their car, navigate to an area they're not familiar with. They need these signs to be able to be seen, and they can also kind of get behind the building. Like, okay, it's over there, I need to look here and move around. I told the story about years ago. And some of you may remember, it's more of an Atlanta, Metro Atlanta thing, but there was a building supply store called West Building Supply. And in Jonesboro, they had this gigantic monster sign that was there for a few months, it's a sign, honestly. But everybody in the town knew that was the landmark of town. And, excuse me, get a little hoarse here. The, a tenant or a tenant or some sort of store came through and knocked the sign down. Well, they contacted our company and said, we need to get this sign back up. And while the sign was down, one of their customers came to them, and they were going down the road looking for it. They realized the sign was gone, and they realized they ran right past the store. And someone, they slammed on brakes, and someone ran right over the back of them. Little things like that, little things for safety would be my last. And I hear if you're answering any questions, so.
Council, any questions for the applicant? All right. Staff. Ms. Eller.
We have our variance request for building signage to the Chick-fil-A at fifty-three James Drive, within the Gateways grocery shopping center. So the subject property is approximately one hundred eighty-two acres, zone C-two, located at the northeast corner of Highway five fifteen and Camp Road. The property is situated right at the hard corner. And as Mr. Holiday alluded, it has more frontage on Camp Road than it does on Highway five fifteen. And the parcel is the home of the future Chick-fil-A drive-through restaurant, which will be under construction soon. These are site context photos taken from the proposed development to the north. We have the future Longhorn site. To the northeast and east, we have Publix and a future Chick-fil-A site. To the south, across Camp Road, we have Cook Trip. And to the west, across Highway five fifteen, we have the Amacola EMC offices. So Mr. Holiday is here on behalf of Chick-fil-A requesting a variance to increase the number of signs with building signage from two to four. As part of the application, they did submit a narrative addressing the hardships that is included in your packets. The primary concerns that were raised by the applicant were limited visibility due to the elevation changes, the high rate of speed along Highway five fifteen, and limited visibility once the neighboring out parcels are developed. So we included the copy of the sign plan, just again to give a better idea of the site layout and where the signage will be located. There will be the one logo sign above the drive-through, and then three script signs on the other building facade. The development will also have the monument sign there at the hard corner of Highway five fifteen and Camp Road. So section ninety-five seventy-one of our sign ordinance addresses hardship situations that warrant variance relief. The first hardship is that proximity of existing signs on adjoining lots causes the property to be ineligible due to spacing requirements or the type of relief sought. So staff believed that this is not met as there are no spacing requirements for wall signage. The second hardship is that the conditions are not the result of the property owner. Staff believes that this is also not met, as the applicant could reduce the number of signs with signage to comply with our code. The third hardship is that the variances are the minimum relief needed to overcome the hardship. Here again, staff believes that this is not met, and there is no hardship related to spacing requirements for wall signs. And the fourth hardship situation, I guess, addresses that even if a hardship situation is present, the zoning ordinance, sorry, the sign ordinance stipulates that variance relief shall in no case be granted to allow for a greater number of signs than would be allowed if the hardship did not exist. So since the applicant is requesting to increase the number of allowed signs from two to four, this request is in direct conflict with this permission. So that staff is recommending denial of the request due to failure to comply with the hardship situations outlined in our sign ordinance. However, I do want to note that the planning commission did unanimously recommend approval of the application at their March twenty-fifth meeting, subject to a condition that the total sign area shall not exceed two hundred square feet for wall signage that requires a permit. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, any questions for staff? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Thank you, Mayor. Seeing the other comments, I will close the public hearing. Council, next item on your agenda is the consent agenda. Heal the floor.
A motion to consent agenda be approved as presented.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, councilman? All in favor? Opposed, sir? Thank you, council. New business, item number one, Ms. Goldner. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm here this evening. We've gotten a request for use of public space event application for Lee Newton Park for October tenth through October the twelfth. This is for the Thunder Creek Motorcycle Rally by Chaos Riders, who is a local club here in Jasper. And their mission is to give back to the community through activities such as charity rides, this motorcycle rally, toy runs, things like that, that raise money for our community and the children within it. For the last several years, they have organized the Thunder Creek Motorcycle Rally in Lee Newton Park during the month of October, where they have live music and gather together in fellowship, go on rides, all of those sorts of things. This is one of their annual fundraisers, where they raise money for providing Christmas presents for children here in Pickens County. And so they have asked that if they may use Lee Newton Park once again for this activity this fall. We do have some gentlemen from Chaos Riders with us this evening, and they will be happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as well. I did want to let you know, excuse me. They have, as a part of their event in the past, they normally do liability waivers for everyone that is a participant. And so that is what they are planning on doing again this year, having everyone that participates do their own liability waiver in order to have this event here, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Any houseguests here? Would you like to say anything about this? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Travis Sterling, thirty-one ninety-five Waleska Highway one oh eight, Jasper, Georgia. Just would like to thank you all for the year that you have allowed us to use it in the past. It has generated those funds to help. As Kim said, we take applications for kids, less fortunate families that need Christmas, right? That's the reason the Brotherhood was started, the club was started, was in honor of the president's son, Sean D. Masco, who was killed in two thousand seventeen. Some people probably know him very well. So it started in honor of him and then to give back to the community for the kids. We take applications ourselves now in the past. We took applications from the sheriff's office for kids that they couldn't benefit. As Kim said, we operate with Toys for Tots and others. Just again, I'd like to thank you for allowing us to use it in the past. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Travis, would you mind telling, kind of giving them a better idea of the things that y'all do around those three days?
So like Ms. Kim mentioned, it is a motorcycle rally music fest. We have different bands come in. We do honor the city's noise ordinance, so we shut everything down before any time is done. We do not rely on policing. We police it ourselves. So we don't, you know, require any extra from that. And we have vendors come in, and we also have raffles. So, you know, we have vendors with just anything that wants to come out and participate to draw the crowd. Anything to do with motorcycles, or gifts, or anything that they want to bring out and help draw folks in. Again, the proceeds that we gain from that is used mainly to support our Christmas, which we call Chaos Kids. You can actually look it up on Facebook. We try to keep it up. A lot of families don't want their pictures taken. Ones that do, you know, and allow us to post it, we do post it. That's about, it's about the gist of it.
How many will normally participate?
So last year, we had about five hundred. The year before, we had about three hundred. So it's growing, you know, very little. As Kim said, we do have the liability waivers. If you would like to see those, I can present those. I did not break this with you tonight. If you would like to approve them or however.
Council, any questions?
If you wouldn't mind getting me a copy of that, or a set of the terms.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
We have, it was not a lot of attorney, but.
Each attorney is a little different, as we know that.
Absolutely. Absolutely, I understand better than you.
All right. Questions for the applicant? We'll say the contingency of legal reviewing a liability waiver would be a good idea. I will yield the floor.
Make a motion the rally be approved.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, Mayor. Looking forward to the meeting.
Yeah, just have Jenny send it to me. Thank you.
New business, item number two, consideration of special event request. Mr. Douglas, welcome to the meeting.
Mr. Mayor and Council. So, we had talked to the Parks and Properties Committee, called the Seaboard West, for use of public space. And the actual location was not such that it was listed out, so they checked other. And it has not been something that has been widely utilized as part of the public space amendment of the Cove property. So we wanted to bring this to the entire council because the committee was not necessarily receptive of incorporating that into the normal rotation of offerings. So, just wanted to kind of gauge the direction of council. The event specifically is scheduled for June seventh of this year. There has been a history of this event being held down at the Cove. The actual name of the organization falls under the Cove Waterfall Association. It's a side event beginning at nine a.m. until nine p.m. And as you may recall, we began the twenty twenty-five season by receiving applications for events and bringing them to you all for your direction.
Thank you, sir. Council, this did go through committee. I asked the committee members to give us some input.
Yeah, based on my recommendation, I don't think we opened up the property and allowed for space to be here for overnight venues or community venues. So I think we just pause on that right now and recommend denying the request.
So in the description, that was the information that was given to us, they mentioned that they had been doing this for quite some time, including last year. I don't ever remember, particularly in our last manager's administration, that we allowed, that we had gotten away from, thought we got away from allowing this down there. So, we confirm or deny that they did have it down there last year?
Last year, I do not know. The year prior, yes.
Okay. Did that come through council or is it, we've changed our policies to where now things have to come through council as more of a celebration as opposed to a control measure? But in those days, Kim, did that come before council, it was approved, or?
No, sir, it did not.
Okay.
Council, our committee is, it's not a favorable recommendation. Mr. Hann, was that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, we made a motion to deny the request.
Then I'm neutral.
You're sorry?
I'm neutral.
Okay.
I just, I have one question. It was mentioned an overnight event. I'm looking at application, and it says nine a.m. to nine p.m. Is it truly an overnight?
That we did, in the application, would not be cleaning up and leaving and making a profit until eleven a.m. the next day. Is what they had posted.
If I'm going back and cleaning up those?
Cleanup completion is eleven a.m. June eighth, twenty twenty-five. That was about two lines down, sir.
Okay.
I have a motion.
So it's inconsistent.
Yes. Do you have a motion? On the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, council. Item number three, consideration of Jones Oil distributor candidate section. Welcome back to the meeting, Ms. Eller.
Thank you, hello again. So as a reminder, this is an annexation request for approximately one point four six acres. Staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to conditions. And the planning commission recommended unanimous approval as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, you have the information. We've done the presentation publicly. Yield the floor.
We wanted to, two different motions.
Yes, if I can have a motion just on the annexation request.
Make a motion that we accept the annexation request.
Have a motion on the floor or have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, council. Item number four, consideration of Jones Oil distributor rezoning request. Ms. Eller.
Okay, so this is the concurrent rezoning request to change the zoning on the property from Pickens County Highway Business District to the city of Jasper C-two general commercial district. And again, this is for the one point four six acres located at twenty-one oh one Waleska Highway one oh eight. Staff recommends approval, and the planning commission also recommended unanimous approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, staff recommends approval. Commission recommended approval. Yield the floor for a motion on the rezoning request.
Make a motion, we accept the rezoning request for Jones Oil distributor.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, council. Item number five, consideration of Chick-fil-A variance request.
Ms. Eller. All right, so this is a sign variance request for the proposed Chick-fil-A at fifty-three James Drive. The applicant is requesting a variance to increase the allowed number of signs from two to four. Staff did recommend denial of the request. However, the planning commission recommended unanimous approval of the request, subject to the condition that the overall sign area shall not exceed two hundred square feet. I also did want to highlight, and this is noted on your action form, but the planning commission didn't want me to relay that this, that their recommendation was largely based on the decision that was made for the Longhorn variance back in February of this year. They felt that a precedent was set, since they just wanted to relay that for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as I remarked, this is not based on the size, this is based on the number of signage. And as Ellie mentioned, the Longhorn had the similar variance request that was approved. I will yield the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance request, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion, counsel?
There are considerations on this. I'll ask my famous question. Do you understand the conditions and accept them?
Of course, you do.
Thank you.
We researched the conditions from the last one.
You knew I was going to ask.
I'm good with that.
Any further discussion, counsel?
Yeah, and this is what I mentioned, and I think I had mentioned it too, as well, about us relooking at this because we are getting a lot of variants on those signs particularly. So they don't have to do this every time.
Yes, the ordinance review.
What orders, Mayor? Mayor, a motion on the floor?
One moment, we're still in discussion.
Okay.
The, the item that was brought before us is based on the number of signs. That's what the staff recommendation of denial is based off of. The condition's not being met. And so, I certainly do remember that conversation. I haven't, we'll certainly follow up.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. If you decided to rewrite your code or anything, I'm willing to help, I'm not throwing it to you.
I have to name the number. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number six, consideration of supporting for adjoining the Pickens County Emergency Operations Plan EOP. Chief Share, welcome to the committee, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, how we doing this evening?
We're here.
First thing I have is the Pickens County Emergency Operations Plan. This is a plan that much like that mitigation plan that came before you previously, that is adopted by both the county and all municipalities that are within the county. The basis of this plan and the purpose of it is to set forth the roles and responsibilities for opening and activating emergency operations plan. Who's going to be responsible for what, what the criteria for activating and anything else that's involved with operating in that plan. This is a requirement for us being compliant with the state as well, as far as Tujima, as a county and city. You have any questions regarding the plan?
Counsel, any questions for Chief Share regarding the EOP? We appreciate you doing it. A complex conversation.
Yes.
Counsel, I yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the plan.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion taken, discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number seven, consideration of approval of bid received for station 14 construction. Chief Share, this is exciting.
It is, yes. And I want to first commend Mary Elizabeth and her planning zoning team. The presentation they gave was phenomenal as far as the comprehensive plan. That's a, that's a really big and daunting task to take on. It's very important to us and that I can't wait to see what they come up with. And much like she was talking about sort of planning goes, I was sworn in three years and three days ago, as you can see, Jasper, and.
Not that you're counting.
Not that I'm counting. Not that I'm counting. But we knew then, we knew then that we needed to put a station on the south end to help recover and help with response times. That's a growing area that we've seen over the last several years. And putting a station down there will definitely assist to reduce response times to that area and help us with our ISO and better sort of systems. We went out to RFP for this, went on a bid. We received two bids. We evaluated the bids using our RFP process. And we came up with a conclusion that we believe the application design development had the best proposal for those fire stations for the construction. That would work best for the city, for all our needs. I believe both of the bids were attached to your agenda, if I'm not mistaken. I can answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief. Counsel, I will yield the floor for a motion on staff's, Chief's recommendation, application design and development.
Make a motion that we approve RFP from application design and development.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discussion, discussion of airport lift station plat amusement. I have myself listed, counsel, the chair and I have discussed. The chair was requesting that this be considered to be contingent upon the quitclaim deed. Legal has expressed the opinion that that is feasible, or we could table it until that process is complete. Any questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the annexation process is complete.
Yes. Have a motion to table and I have a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Item number nine, discussion of planning services. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir. So you may recall the March work session, we had brought up the idea of utilizing part-time positions to help us with cleaning and/or if we wanted to go out to try to find a company. Understandably, based on our experience, we would be subject to probably more cost based on our history with, with the company versus if we're able to solicit a part-time position. We do feel as though that the facilities of the city do warrant some sort of professional cleaning versus kind of a mission that actually has been during quite some months. So within your package, you have the direction provided at the work session to present with kind of a part-time position or a position, so it's not listed as part-time and full-time. It's just the way HR explained it to me is you put out a job description and then as you interview candidates, you could then disclose the, the part-time if they'd be willing to go for that. So with that, just wanted to, by the way, the pleasure of counsel.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, you may recall, our last meeting, I believe, was I asked staff to bring forward not only a job description for the part-time position for facilities custodian, but also the request for a proposal RFP documentation. So we do have that present. You have both options. Just a suggestion is I would allow staff to move forward with the job description and posting and see what the market holds if we can get someone to come on board with Team Jasper. And if staff, if the administration doesn't decide that that is not feasible, then allow them to move over to an RFP process.
And if I could, so procedurally, I know sometimes government makes a whole lot of sense to some folks watching, but we do not have a budgeted position for a part-time or full-time. We do have monies in the budget for cleaning services. So this is an example of although we may have 10 vacancies on our city team, that city manager or the city team could fill those vacancies because we're budgeted positions. Because there is money available, but it's in the realm of cleaning services, as we reviewed it the first of the year, we felt as though that it may not be as cost-effective to do that versus a part-time 20-hour-a-week person. So if it's the pleasure of the council to move forward with that, we could move forward in the direction of getting the job description out. We're meeting with the administrative commission, committee next week, week after, already pre-arranged to talk about a number of things. Part of it would be the 2025 budget amendments. And when we would amend the budget, we would take the monies allocated in those line items for cleaning services and it would just be a budgeted position for that part-time. So just procedural, just kind of, let you know why.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
Motion the position, part-time position be approved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you, counsel. Next item is number 10, discussion of stormwater projects. Ms. Goldberg?
Good evening again. So I was not at the meeting. That was on March the 27th. However, I understand that y'all did discuss the Elizabeth Street Road and Culvert project that we did need to take immediate action on. And the selected contractor had been out there working last week. They are nearly finished with the cleanup work and kind of dressing up. So although we have discussed that project, the team knows of other projects that are equally as important and need to have some action taken on them. We do have the opportunity to scale a number of projects that we feel might be more appealing to a contractor to take on rather than just one small here, one small there, that sort of thing. Specifically, we're looking at the Culvert and Road repair on Stagall Drive near the Mary Street intersection. There is another Culvert project at Squaw Valley Road near, I cannot think of the name of the road that it is close to.
Laurel.
Laurel Lane, thank you.
Laurel, yep.
And then also at the southeast corner of Mary and Stagall, there has been a need to address some stormwater issues that basically sheet across the property there. And so what we would like to do is, is take the plan that has been laid out for us and extend the curb line there on that corner, creating basically a stop to the drainage that goes across that property. So there are those three projects that we would bundle together, then should council say that that is the direction they'd like for us to take. Just discussing money a little bit. So you will recall that 2014's lost. We have been whittling that money away and using it for several of our smaller projects that have come up this year. After we have finished with the pavement assessment survey, and then I believe we are using Elizabeth Street, those repairs out of that fund. We feel like we have right about $55,000 left to spend. And then with the LRA money, that special allotment of LMIG dollars that requires no match, that was put forth by the governor as a part of, of the budget, having some excess monies in order to be able to share with the communities, that will be $98,000 that we will not have to provide any kind of match on. So that's right at about $150,000 that we would have to tackle some of these stormwater projects that we would need to. And so, looking for some direction from counsel this evening, if you would like for us to proceed with this plan, if you would like for something else. We do need to get this 2014's lost money spent, though. The deadline for that is December, the, at the end of December this year, so.
And if I could, so just to elaborate, I know this is a brag on Kim. Part of the reason we do have, you keep hearing about the 2014 money, the 2014 money. She's been able to solicit and get GDOT to essentially understand that we do have one of the resources. So some of the match requirements that the otherwise have put forward, she's communicated to them on both the, the TAP projects that were essentially, the 91,000 or so that we have remain in SPOSS 2014, we would not be required to use any of those match monies for any of the TAP, correct?
That is correct. So for the 2024 TAP grant project, which, you know, is the, very specifically the sidewalk along North Main Street from Chambers up to Revolution Church, critically needed project. They had raised that grant allotment to us because the preliminary engineering amount was not enough, they didn't feel. And since they handled these projects for us, the management and the design and everything, they had that dollar amount, which increased our match from $330,000 to $450,000. When I had expressed to them that we would have difficulty coming up with that additional allotment, they went ahead and granted us $160,000 in matching funds to use towards the preliminary engineering. And so they have essentially paid for our match that was required with the preliminary engineering of that project.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Yes.
Do we have an estimated cost on these things?
So, on the Squaw Valley, they're probably looking at about $70,000. We are still trying to solicit some, some input from vendors. Obviously, a total of $50,000 does require a plan and bids. So this is what we thought, if we could scale them all together to say, well, maybe if the Mary curb line was, was something that no one would be interested in, would it be more attractive to a, a vendor to say, if I'm going to mobilize and come in and do X, 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 then I'll be competing on an equal playing field for instance, and I'll just put forth a bid. Just for full disclosure, there was about $250,000 that went towards the Pioneer Culvert replacement. So we are always holding our breath. We did get fortunate that the Elizabeth Street came in, $130,000. That is kind of at time for those. You just don't know who's going to put in a written quote and/or written bid, anything over $50,000. So we even looked at, if we're not successful, if we have to break up a bigger project into smaller projects to get someone interested in, in doing this, though. I'll be more than happy to let y'all attend a site visit with Kim. I've already been out there. I did not see the snake, Kim did. So if you, if you want to see some water lines and water and some rocks and some culverts, apparently they're scared of me, or she's scared of the way, one or the other, so.
A question was triggered by Ms. Fundis or Ms. Goldberg either once.
Yes.
If, if counsel wants to create a motion allowing us to move forward on all of these projects for RFP,
Yes.
could the RFP be created in such a way as though you have the ability to drop certain projects in order to get others done?
Yes, so I would recommend that we proceed with bid alternates. Basically, you have the ability to pull. So if one portion of it is just way more than whatever we think is reasonable or, or just is not going to work in our budget to where we could get the other items taken care of, then we would have that flexibility.
Bid alternates. Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, yield the floor.
Make a motion that we put these out with the RFP to see who can get them done with the alternate like she just said, so we can take that away if we needed to.
Thank you, ma'am. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, sir? Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 11, discussion of resolution number 2025-06 for the extension of resolution 2024-16. Having myself and Mr. Douglas listed. Counsel, you're familiar, this is the temporary suspension. Based on the professional engineers that we partner with, it has been recommended that we extend this. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir. So in your packet, there is a resolution legal to, this was predicated predominantly on the GMC, who is the engineer assisting us with the master plan. And based upon their analysis, you know, obviously the, the impetus for the, the temporary suspension was based upon a supply issue and a connection issue relative to collection and distribution system. So candidly, there has not been any silver bullet achieved for any sort of new water supply. And obviously, we have not presented you all with the, the drawings yet that GMC is working on to get some of these products moving on, i.e. the master lift station, i.e. a couple of water line replacements to help with the distribution of water, along with some rehabilitation projects for the water treatment plant. I know Mr. Lanning, I don't want to scold his thunder, but he did sit in with the committee on the actual 6% drawings that GMC had for the water treatment. It would be the goal to have those to you all in June to look at. And again, that's not anything other than just a rehabilitation of the plant. I know a council member of ours has kind of embedded in my brain that, you know, if you have a vehicle and you don't ever change your oil, sometimes you're going to have to change the motor. So you're not necessarily getting a new vehicle per se. So that end of itself is probably a couple million dollars at the water treatment plant. So based upon all the circumstances that GMC's been walking through, they have put forth. forth a recommendation letter of extending the suspension. In light of information, they have continued to unveil, and that is tied to the resolution as Exhibit 1. So the resolution's in your packet, and Exhibit 1 is there as well.
Yes, sir. It says in here, temporary suspension, show me the period of 365 days from ending date of the original suspension, September 2025, which remains in effect, continues until September 2026. It's important to note, council, that as we continue down this path of investigating, researching, and fixing our infrastructure and the systems that we've placed for decades, we continue to use our partners that we have, such as GMC here, the professionals, the engineering firms, and we are basing our decisions off of that information. And so at that time, I will yield the floor for a motion.
Make a motion to extend the.
Motion to approve.
Approve the, approve the motion, but to extend the water reduction.
Suspension?
Suspension, thank you.
Water and suspension.
Question number.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, council. Item number 12, Sidewalk in Luba's Letter. Ms. Burgess, welcome back.
Thank you.
Council, before Ms. Burgess starts, this is an item that hit staff, I believe, early this morning.
Yes.
And so I apologize for it being a late matter, but being a local business, we want to work with those, and this is a request that, if not heard tonight, we'll held them up for a bit, we want to make sure that we're doing the best we can.
Yes, and I appreciate you running the agenda to get this on. I know that they are anxious to get started, and as you may know, Pradel is a company that is what's founded here, and they're looking to expand here. So they have purchased the lot at the corner of Hood and Jeanette, where they'll be creating a 14,000 square foot manufacturing area with the attached office to it. So as part of our final site plan review, they have received approval for their stormwater, their utilities, and their planning and zoning. This would be the last remaining thing. As you recall, when we amended the code last year to offer this instead of a variance request, this would also, you know, a sidewalk, payment in lieu of sidewalk also assists the city in repairing, maintaining, and creating new sidewalks. So this fund was created so that we could all, not just to give the property owner or developer an out, but also to give us, have the ability to fund other, find another funding source for our sidewalk situation. So Pradel, again, has requested payment in lieu due to the topographical issues out there. As you know, it's about a 3:1 slope. If you ask the mayor, he can tell you exactly where every blade of grass is, because he scares me every morning, from what I understand. Anyhow, so along the fringe of Jeanette, and it has been calculated for $10,304.54, and what we do to get that number is one of our partners, Kimberly Korn, has given us a cubic foot price, which is right now for this year is $11.43. And so we calculate that with the linear fee of frontage that they have, and then we add a 20% contingency on top of that for, to take into consideration inflation or any costs that may happen between receiving the funds and then using the funds. So they are requesting, and it is staff's recommendation, due to the existing topography, the stormwater, and the width of the existing road, that it would be extremely challenging and financially, it could create a financial hardship to do the cotton fills over there. So it would be staff's recommendation to accept the fees for the payment in lieu of sidewalks.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, per our ordinance, they did provide a letter, which I handed out, as a copy of the letter. They have made payment in lieu of the sidewalk, and so I'll just yield the floor for a motion.
Motion that we approve the payment in lieu of sidewalk.
Say it.
Motion and a second, any discussions, Jim? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you again.
Committee report updates, development of local infrastructure. Dr. Proctor, Mr. Faust.
I recommend we refer to item 11, which obviously leads to have some ramifications. I would also say that we continue to have some TICOM meetings, even though at this juncture in time, future those projects would be determined based on our ability to supply water to work. And I would like to say that there is a lot of public comment recently, really for the last little while, about the amount of money that we are spending on bathrooms and parks. And even though that is a fair amount of money for Back to Brook Park, where that's a maximum grant, it was voted on by referendum by the voters, and the tune of that is around $2 million. How that relates to infrastructure, we're currently spending between $25 and $30 million on our infrastructure projects. So between our wastewater plant and several of the chief of projects, which we may talk about from our enterprise, we are spending a tremendous amount of dollars on our infrastructure. We did not put ourselves in this position. We don't want to try and get out of it. We're doing it very diligently, as demonstrated by the commitment that we have to, looking at our infrastructure with our master plan, it's proven with our willingness to embark on a comprehensive plan that will be our own and will give us leverage for impact fees. These are all things that could have been done prior, but until recently, we did not have an assessment of structure and the condition of our infrastructure. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And just to add on to that, Mary, her department's been very good about what people are approaching, being dishonest, and just letting them know what our situation is. So we still invite the business that wants to come, but we can invite other water sources and get their infrastructure backed up to where it needs. It's going to take time, it's going to take a lot of work.
I reiterate, she, all she does is enforce the ordinances that we voted on, most of them unanimously. In order, there are ways to change those ordinances. It was built into the process, and that's a lot of courage for her to do the job and do it the way she does it, and I appreciate it greatly.
Her whole part.
Her whole part. Yeah, go ahead.
Funds and admin, if there's any mistake.
Including your package is the financial report for the period. Any questions on that? I feel forward down, that's forward down to Lindsay.
Lindsay would be glad to answer those.
Yeah, she would be glad to not let me answer them, so.
Not tonight, please don't let him do it tonight.
At the workshop, I did mention that committee was working on a update, the employee handbook that continues, and expected that to come to council by the next meeting.
Maybe.
Thank you, sir. Anything? All right, enterprise, Dr. Proctor, Mr. Luen.
There was mention earlier about meeting with Kimberly Korn concerning the water rehab project. I was able to attend that meeting. Infomart was also included in the meeting for review of 60% construction plans. This is a project that's funded by Jifa. Scope of the work includes critical updates for electrical systems, filters, backwash, It's on, we are on target to finalize the documents, have plans and documents in time for our June work session, which would allow us to get this out to bid if approved in July. So work continues on that. And as Dr. Proctor said earlier, this is part of some of the, it's very expensive work that we're having to pitch up on.
Thank you, sir.
Another firm of ads, sir.
Parks and progress, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Faust.
Spring has sprung.
The fall has arrived.
Maybe not tomorrow.
And winter's starting tomorrow.
Yeah, and I think the general theme of the night is just appreciation for staff and all of our work that they do. Last month, we were able to ride around and kind of take a look and get a current, get lay of land of our parks. And just practice say that, yeah, for Peace Park has been getting a lot of publicity just because it's just been a lot of change here in the past. But at Duck Pond, we're doing a lot of work there as well, and he's really stepping up Josh and team to fulfill and help us out. So just kudos to them and all the hard work that they continue to do.
We have a group that's scheduled for our lead meeting.
Yeah.
Our staff's doing a really good job. If you haven't visited our parks lately, go look at them, they've spent much of the winter working and improving. This has really been surprising how good a job they've done, they've done a lot of work.
Thank you. The parks do look good. Public safety, Mr. Hammond, same.
Again, just crushing life back there in the back, looking nice and calm, relaxed. But just wanted to give kudos to Chief Sher about our fireworks grant that he was able to capture for us, so really huge whenever he can find savings and so forth for us. So kudos to you for bringing that up. Outside of that, hosting trainings, doing a lot of good for not only our departments, but other communities around us as well. So glad we have these partnerships and rely on those to help others. Missing anything?
No, I was just going to tell Mike at the police department, he can stop fire department occasionally, y'all might get something. Doing a great job, I mean, the public departments, and we really do appreciate the hard work.
Chief, glad to see you back there.
Thanks, thank you.
Move on to city manager comments. Mr. Douglas?
This is Mayor, and I do have to apologize to council member Hannah and Faust. We picked a day that was probably a day after 80 degrees to then get on open air PTVs to go look at the parks.
In 20 degrees.
And it, I think the windshield was in the 20s, no joke, and I didn't realize that until after I deft all and looked at the weather. Mr. Hannah had asked that we kind of put together a presentation, I don't know if we got that yet, we'll try to get that from Mr. Hannah about showing the parks, because I think to his point, we can sit up here and we can kind of talk about, you know, the parks through the employees and through other things, but we actually visited and see it, and so we wanted to get a visual representation. I think obviously too, that today is another example of, you have 80-plus degree weather, and then it can turn quickly, so just wanted to apologize for that, and we'll get some good images. I do have something that I want to talk about, but I do want to say, great job, Chief Sher, this is Chief Ian, who apparently is left now, but please let it be on the record that I did thank both of them. Admittedly, I know the committee noticed that I was absent. I think that that's indicative of the leaders we do have, that you don't always have to have me interjecting at every single thing, but they did a great job, y'all did a great job, getting to the point of hopefully turning some dirt, more so, and laying some concrete. Also, Chief Dawkins is away at chief's conference, so it's not that Assistant Chief Davis is just so desirous of coming here tonight that he said, please, Chief Dawkins, you stay home and let me come tonight, although he probably does want to do that time to time. So just, if you need anything, you can call Chief, but Mike is more than capable in his absence to do that. Kim and I had a fantastic meeting with Frank Leis for the Pickens County Veterans Memorial, and just wanted to kind of talk about just briefly some of the integrity of our partners that we do have. Apparently, in 2022, the administration at the time had, within their purchasing policy and limits, offered to, I guess, sponsor the Veterans Memorial Park. And at the time, obviously, I was not here, Kim was not ready to, and Frank was just giving us an update a week or so ago, and he handed us a check for $750. And both Kim and I were, you know, kind of like, okay, well, thanks, what is this? And he kind of gave us the history that unfortunately, they were not able to secure the actual logo or something, the bench or something. So he just wanted to give that back. And I told him, I said, I think that is phenomenal, that we would have never known. So he gave it here, and I told him that in the past, I would have ripped the check up and said, well, this is a donation to the city. I said, but I do want to make this big deal out of the integrity of someone doing the right thing. So with that, there's about 20 curb stops that they were going to purchase, and it so happens, and this was Kim and I's idea after Frank, and I said, what I want to do is rip the check up on y'all's behalf, and to essentially say, we're going to purchase the curb stops, and to continue thanking you for your partnership. So I hope you don't mind, but it's less than $1,000, so it's really a nominal amount, but it's, I want to make a continued big deal of the support that you all do for the Veterans Memorial Park. And just Frank being a great guy.
Frank and I have worked hard for them, and they have done a lot for our community, and so thank you for ripping the check up.
And Kim, you got a little?
Yes, so I get to end the evening with a little celebration. Let's see if this will come up. So you didn't get to see my folks with work anniversaries last year, or last month, but in April, we have several folks that are celebrating some work anniversaries with Team Jasper. One on the next page, a very lengthy amount of time that should definitely be celebrated. Some familiar faces on there, I think everyone has heard of Turtle, our mechanic, Team Turtle, all the way, he has saved us gobs of money on the preventative maintenance and things that he's been able to do, he is celebrating a year. Chief Sher, as he mentioned, has been here three years, can't believe it seems like yesterday, and it also seems like 103 years ago sometimes, so we're very proud of him. Sergeant, I believe, Robert Munzbe, is that correct, Chief? Very good. He has been with us a year. Sergeant Kendra, is that correct, Chief Sher? Very good. Been with us for three years. Ryan Crump, who you may have seen recently on social media, had just achieved his advanced EMT through the National Registry, so very proud of him for that. He has been with us for four years. Dustin Lovell has been with us for eight years, can you believe that? Zach Waters in our utilities department has been here with us for five years. And then the next one, it's hard for me to even imagine this, but Jason Long, 27 years. And for that, that is. I'm very proud of him for sticking it out with us, so you thank him all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item, city council comments. Council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
For the benefit of fellow council members and fellow, I'd like to talk a little bit about the sign ordinance.
Yes.
That is my committee. And just to remind, the council, I believe in 2021, we underwent a fairly expensive project. process, engaged Clark Patterson Lee to help us with first rendition of our planning and zoning and building ordinances, but also at that same time, the sign ordinance. And anytime that I hear of anybody having issues with the sign ordinance, I reach out to them directly, which I've done, to try to identify things that we need to address. There is a process built into the ordinance that will allow us to make changes. Sometimes that can be done with a simple text amendment, and we've done that on a couple of occasions, and sometimes it has to be done with an ordinance change, which requires, sometimes has to go through the P and Z process. But really, if we want to look at this, I certainly don't think we should try to go through our entire process. We made decisions based on protecting first movement rights for freedom of speech. We made decisions based on aesthetics, and we also made, particularly for our downtown area, and we made decisions based on how that time we wanted our city to look. It went through the public training process, it went through that process, it was voted unanimously by the council. But the short answer is if there are specific things that we need to address, we just need to address them and that needs to come to committee. The particular instances that we're going through right now with these variances around this one development, the issue around that is that there's, that's actually five separate developments. So unfortunately, each one of these variances are kind of, we didn't know who the out parcels were going to be, so we couldn't approve in advance what they would request. But I'm proud of the council's ability to understand there are conditions that can be met. I know it does put staff in a little bit of an odd position, but I think that they, as well as our commission, understand that we support them fully in this time. And let's see, I know there've been some enforcement issues that we, that we've talked about, and we had some issues, I think, with some feather flags, but that actually turned out to be some accounting property. It's just something we need to look at. We've offered, the variance process has been 100% successful for the applicant so far. And not that we want to continue to go through that, but there is recourse already built into the system if somebody wants to. And I guess that's all that I have for now.
Well, and I'm the one that requested that.
Yeah.
I've done it in email, I've done it in, and that's the reason I did it again. I wanted to be looked at for the little man. I understand what we're going through right now. I don't want to have a variance ever made, and I realize after this big project...
Maybe we got two more.
Well, I understand that with the big project, it's one thing, but I think some of the little guys are getting hurt in between, and that's why I ask for it to be looked at. And if I need to come to you, need to come to you, need to come to you, just somebody tell me, because I said it to everybody.
Well, maybe it'd be helpful to know what the specific issues are.
I can give you a bunch of them, you know, but I think that needs to be discussed. I mean, I'll be glad to send them in an email to all of y'all. Just the ones that I've heard. I mean, you know, so.
Thank you, counsel. Anything further? I will comment on that before we skip off to the council comments.
I was about to make a motion.
I will, counsel, I'll ask the Development Infrastructure Committee, gather that information from the council members, look at the sign ordinance and recent variance requests, create a recommendation to bring to full council if there's anything that needs to be brought. I think the most recent two that we discussed were based on the number of signs, not the size of the signs. So if you can just kind of research and dial in on that, and then we'll work together to get the info of the examples we have to make sure we're helping our businesses, we're not hurting them, and then also make sure that it's fair protection under the law. Unfortunately, as a government, we don't have the ability to do things for locally-owned small mom and pops that we can't offer for large chains. It is fair protection under the law. I think our attorney would shake his head and agree to that, and so we want to make sure we're striking the right balance, and we certainly don't want to hurt anyone. Let's help the folks the best we can.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more comment?
Yes, sir.
We've been on this journey now for quite some time, and we've made tremendous progress. And one of the early objectives that we focused on was our, was the downtown revitalization. Even though I think that we've made tremendous strides, I don't think we're finished yet, but I do want to remind the public and also the council that we've recently gone through an interviewing process for our community engagement manager, and we extended an offer last Wednesday to a young professional that graciously accepted the job, and we look forward to her starting, and that will be part of our Main Street program that will be, that we've already got underway, and will be moving even more rapidly now for that, hopefully achieving that this year. But I've already been in direct contact with Elizabeth Elliott at the DCA, and that, and just so people understand what that means for our city, it's not a position that anybody else satisfies with their responsibilities. We do want them to help engage us with the community, but it's also designed to ultimately be an economic development tool for our city, and it's really exciting and a new level of professionalism that's going to help our downtown as well as our areas around the rest of the cities. I'd like to, sir.
You took one of the comments I was going to make.
Oh, I was.
No, no, you're good, you're good. We'll move on to mayor comments. Number one, Keep Pickin' Beautiful wasn't here this evening with us. I spoke to Miss Barrett, she had planned something to come up. Get involved in the community, the beautification and all that April has to offer through Keep Pickin' Beautiful. The City of Jasper Comprehensive Plan, I am so excited. Thank you, staff, for getting that going. It is not to take away from any other organization, it's to better our own, and it's to give those stakeholders a say so. Counsel and staff and public, thank you for listening to all the proclamations that I read this evening. Every single group represented is important to us, and so I appreciate your time. The state of the county is tomorrow morning. That's on my list. Unfortunately, I am going out of town for work, so I will not be able to make it, but the chair of the commission, Chris Anfield speaking, please go tomorrow, hear what chairman has to say about the state of the county. As Dr. Proctor just mentioned, we recently extended employment to someone for a community engagement manager. We are excited that that role is going to be filled soon. That has tons of potential. That will assist us greatly in multiple ways, as well as our business community and our partners. At the administration level, I spoke to Mr. Douglas a few times. You mentioned the PTV ordinance for golf carts, things like that. I look forward to the amendments that we have coming as warm weather hits us, the community can benefit from some amendments to allow them to get out in some other areas. And lastly, before I forget, the banners on downtown. I had those on the list, so thank you, Dr. Keller. The It's For The Birth banners, they hit the newspaper, they look good in downtown. The number one comment I had from people was, what about the food? Well, guess what? It's not an issue. It's not on people's hoods and windshield, so thank you for that. I appreciate that, they look beautiful. And with that, counsel, next on the item of your agenda is the executive session for real estate legal. Entertaining motion?
Make a motion we do in the executive session.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both a second. Thank you, counsel. We are in the executive session.